I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting. It is Monday, June 7th, 2021, and the time is 8:02 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling?
Here.
Johns, he's ready?
Here.
Ann Hart?
Here.
Bonnie Kim? Frank Panzika?
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Here.
Erin Stone?
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the May 10th, 2021 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Minutes and the minutes of the April 19th, 2021 Executive Session.
I move to approve the May 10th, 2021 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meeting Minutes and the April 19th Minutes. I didn't hear the rest of it.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minute? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Johns, he's ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen? Sorry, wrong list. Ann Hart?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Everybody? All right, motion carries. We'll begin with Facility Development Committee. Mr. Panzika?
Today we have two items on the agenda, and they're both really continuation items, so I'll hand it off to Corey.
All right, for the first item, Joe from Nicholson Associates will update us. Go ahead, Joe.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I will, I'll start with McKenzie. We are, we've just completed week number nine. We continue to make great progress. The weather has continued to cooperate. Since our last meeting, one of our major tasks at hand was structural steel. Steel has been complete with regards to roof steel, which has allowed us to be in position to start our roofing work, which is actually starting today. We, we took, we took delivery of the materials, which was another checklist. There's lots of, lots of materials with long lead times that have been popping up just given supply-demand chain at this time. So we were able to get our materials last week. We should be watertight within a few days at McKenzie. Brick has also started at McKenzie. That started last week, and that should be completed next week, all in preparation of windows. So windows at McKenzie ship next week, and we will start install the week of the 21st. So our, our goal of, of being watertight and not allowing outside elements to affect progress at McKenzie prior to academic year conclusion was achieved. So lots of hard work from the design team, contractors, everyone. So it was a big team effort. Before I move over to Ramona, does anybody have any questions at McKenzie? Ramona, a lot of the same, same scopes of work, just a little different progression. Ramona Roof actually started Saturday, so we are watertight with the first layer, which is great. We did accept those deliveries last week, and we had a full crew working both additions on Saturday, and, and they did achieve watertightness. Right now, we're focusing on the air vapor barrier, which is the, the pretty black stuff that goes on the CMU that the steel bears on. So that'll allow brick to start by week's end. And then also the steel. The steel was completed as well, similar to McKenzie. Windows for Ramona are also shipping next week, and we, we will be installing those the week of the 21st as well. So they, they're running similar paths. Both are on schedule, both are in great shape, and we're just getting prepared now to start some interior renovation work next week once, once staff leaves. And we're under budget.
That, that's an excellent statement to close on. Any questions from anybody else? I had one more comment. I believe they came from you, but it was very nice and value-added to see the drone pictures. Those were, it's a nice perspective on how things are, are moving forward and kind of the layout of where things really fit. So thank you for sending us.
Have no problem. We'll continue with, with, with the footage once a month, so not a problem. We're happy to do it.
Okay, great. And plus, you get to fly a drone, so that's gotta be a plus right there.
I would probably crash it, but we have, we have a certified drone operator.
Thank you very much for that update. And now we have an item on construction costs that updates. So again, I'll hand it off.
All right. So before we dive into some of the updated information, just wanted to touch upon just kind of the rough, a rough outline of like kind of the things that we consider when we're looking at what projects do we do? What are we recommending? Kind of how we plan them out. I think first and foremost, health, life, safety, you know, items that fall into that realm that have immediate needs that need to be addressed that would, you know, potentially impact the safety of students and staff or the, the ability to use a particular building. That's always gonna pop to the top of the list. Other considerations, you have operational considerations of the district. And one of the, one of the things that I've learned is as we kind of map out projects over multiple summers, we have to be conscious of the, the use during the summer. So I think some people know this, but I think it's worth pointing out. We can't really have Highcrest and the Junior High close in the same summer. One of those needs to be open, and it's even better both. Then at the elementary level, we're kind of probably tapped out at two buildings, so we probably need a limit to construction each summer to two buildings or less. Doing one building is ideal. So basically, in any given summer, what we're seeing this summer where we have half our buildings closed is to be able to continue summer operations, that's probably about it, the most we're able to do. Another consideration is just kind of looking at that immediate need, but then also looking at the, the next summer, but also two, three, four summers out, and analyzing what can we afford, what absolutely needs to be done? And then where do they all fall in relation to health, life, safety needs and operational considerations? And then, and then just kind of the last consideration is just any larger project initiatives the district is going through. If we think back, we've had learning commons initiatives. We've had adding keep 39. We've done some large space air conditioning, which still has items open. So that's, that's another consideration. So that's just kind of like some of the ways that, looking at all this information is to try to piece together what gets done in which summer. So in the handouts for everyone, here, let me go ahead and just share my screen. So as I mentioned last month, one of the things that I asked Nicholas and STR to do was there, there was a host of projects, about 10 of them. This sheet has 11 on there with the, with the separate line for bathroom renovations at Harper, was just to give us an idea of some budgetary assessments for each of these projects. So we have an, you know, an updated idea, given current market conditions of what we're looking at, not only for summer '22, but for the next two, three, four summers after that. So what you see on this sheet, and I'll go through each of these projects briefly, is the, the column that ends with the 14 million at the bottom. That was done by Nicholas. Each of those projects reflect, reflects, you know, a pretty good idea of what the project might entail, and then what would it cost, given current market conditions? And then just as a reference point, next to the school name, I wrote in the amount that was in our May, kind of color-coded five-year look at, of projects. It just gives, give you a ref, it gives you a nice reference of like where we're at, what we're looking at now. I think one thing to keep in mind as we think about this document and we start to go through it is I wouldn't get necessarily hung up on the exact amount. I think a document like this, without having done the architectural and engineering design work yet, is it gives us a good idea of the scope of the project. You know, is a project something that's likely to fall between 500,000 and a million? Or is it something that's much larger and is probably around $2 million, or maybe even more? So that's kind of the lens. It kind of gives you an idea of the scope and of each project. And as you can see, things have changed quite a bit in some. So as we go through, the one nice, one thing is some of them, yes, they are more expensive, but there are some positives within here as well. So I'll just start at the top. Harper Roofing, similar scope. The increase reflects current market conditions. Line item number two, Harper replacing two boilers and all the piping that goes from the boilers to the unit vents. As a reminder, this project has really been identified internally as one that needs to be addressed next summer and is at the, at the top of our list as far as needing to be done. You know, as far as why the piping might need to be done, the, the current boilers at Harper are steam boilers. The ones, the set of boilers before that were steam boilers, and a lot of the stuff has just been corroded at a much faster pace than, than a hot water boiler. So to go from 540 to, to 2.4 million, the old number was really just an old estimate that looked at just the boilers and not the, you know, expensive and, and much larger project of, you know, replacing all of that piping. Item three, as you can see, any of the line items for adding large space air conditioning, there was some, some smaller jumps related to current market conditions. Item four, the 198,000, that's to renovate and update four bathrooms in the middle of the building. They're all kind of right next to each other, and as, as I had mentioned last month, one of the worries is that, as it relates to the urinals, if something were to, any of those were to break, which does happen, we would have to shut down all the, all the plumbing to, to a bathroom, which would be problematic. Line items five and six, this is one of the areas where I, I think is positive news. So as we kind of look out to future summers, it's not doing five and six. It would be five or six. So five is adding air conditioning to the large gym at McKenzie, be about 771,000. Or we could go in and add air conditioning to any of the remaining classrooms that don't have it by adding chillers, a chiller, and it would be 900,000. So you're talking 130,000-ish difference to either do one space or to have the entire, all the classrooms at McKenzie with air conditioning. Ramona's cafeteria is the same thing, they're just a reflection of current market conditions. Ramona Windows in line eight went from 1.4 to 2.1. Of all the projects, this one probably as good a handle on the scope as any without going into design work. A few years ago, STR had actually measured the actual size of the windows in each throughout the building. That was shared with contractor to get an idea of the current market conditions. And, and that's where we're at. As I mentioned last month, there is a consideration of do we do it during the summer? Do we do it during the fall? Would there be a discount? Nicholas's feedback from contractors was a little bit of yes and no. Yeah, it could be, but, you know, by waiting, you could also run into more expensive labor or materials or, you know, doing it during the summer. Flip side, you know, there are, most of these companies are a lot busier. At the end of the day, when you're bidding, it really is gonna come down to what these specific contractors have open in their schedules when they're bidding on our projects. So it, yeah, we could see a discount if we did it in the fall, but no one came out and said, "Yeah, I would, you know, give you 5% or 10%."
And just, and just jump in there, Corey, sorry to cut you off, but I would recommend is a project like that, I would construct the bid form to have an option. Maybe just have two schedules. Option, option one or base bid one can be a summer critical type schedule. Base bid two or option two or an alternate can be a fall schedule, just so we can get a hard number of what that differential. And Corey's right, there are a lot of factors that play into it. A lot of it's the timing, workload for certain contractors. Obviously, if, if they have light, if they have a light projection at work for the fall, they're probably gonna take a project a little more aggressively to fill that slot. So I think, I think the safe, the safe approach would just be to have those options to, to not miss that opportunity for any type of cost savings.
Thanks, Joe. Line item nine, WJHS Roof, the old placeholder was 2.5. As we dove into the specific section, so for reference, when you look at any of our roofs, there are many different sections at WJHS. I think there's either 14 or 15. So we really would only, in the next couple of years, need to replace six of those sections. That is one reason for the, for the lower amount, which is nice. And then any of the remaining sections, I don't think are, are probably needed until around 2030-ish. So that, that was, that was a good bit of news. And then line item 10, this is, this is one, this is a project that we know what we're going to need to address in the next few years. Is it gonna be 3.6? I don't, I mean, I think this is one where we would really need to get into the architectural and engineering design details to know, you know, is it, does it drop down below 3? Where is it at? One of the considerations there, besides just replacing unit vents at Highcrest, is that with all the different additions that have been done over the years, there are multiple control systems and different types of unit vents, and that has presented numerous problems, not only during this past year, but in, in, in most years, they're just, they don't all operate on this, on the same system. So if we were going to find ourselves in a situation where we were replacing the unit vents there, we would also take a hard look at, do we spend a little bit more money and change out the control systems as well, so that the entire building is operating on the same system? So that, that potential change of operating, control system is reflected in the 3.6. And then the last item on the list is the air conditioning to the auditorium, much like the other ones, seeing a little bit of a jump that reflects current market condition. I'll just add one last thought before we, before I ask if there's any questions or any discussion. So last month, I had talked about, was kind of an introduction to all the projects for 2022. This month, we were hoping to get, you know, board, a feeling of where the board may be leaning, and then in August is where we would ask for the board's approval to start incurring costs for architectural and engineering design costs. In light of where some of these numbers have come in and what the top priority for next summer is, which is the Harper Roof, the boiler replacement with the piping, and then the renovation of the bathrooms as an alternate. What we would like to get from the board today is the board's okay to start incurring architectural and engineering cost on items one, two, and four? And then, as we've only had this information for a few days, the administration needs a little more time to go back and assess what other projects might be recommended come August for the summer of '22. I think it goes without saying that the, the, the scope and the potential size of the Harper Boiler Replacement and Piping Project does, at least for now, impact some of these large space air conditioning items. And then when we look at some of the other ones that we know we have to do over the next couple of summers, I think we just need some time to sort through everything, look at it over multiple years before we would have an idea of what we wanted to recommend and in what order. And then the other handout was just our color-coded five-year capital projects document, and I've put in the updated numbers where they were at. And the only ones I have slated for 2022 summer are the, the three items one, two, and four. And I've kind of slid each of the other ones back pending further analysis. So with that, any questions, comments, discussion?
Um, thanks for all this. I feel like I just wanna put my finger on the scale when it comes to McKenzie. It's more important to do the remaining classrooms for that incremental cost is where I think it makes the most sense. And you have my blessing personally to proceed. And I'll be interesting, I mean, this is, none of this is cosmetic, right? This is all necessary amounts. So thank you.
John?
Yeah, thanks for doing this. I think I'm grateful you guys did this, cuz it, it, I think it gives like me and probably the rest of us feel this way, a bigger picture understanding of the costs going into the future to maintain the buildings. And, and one of, one of the things I always worry about, when we look at the little picture, are we missing a bigger picture? You know, is there a point of pain that we're willing to stop accepting and maintaining old buildings? Eventually declare fail on some of these old buildings and go down the road of replacing them? So just given how expensive it is to maintain them, you know, we're talking, I don't know, I did a quick math, $3 million for pretty basic stuff, you know, on many buildings. So I don't know, something to think about, I think about it. I assume we all think about it. It's hard to spend this much money, you know? It's, I'm sort of stunned, even though I know, I know it's, it's, you know, I'm sure a ton of labor goes into this, and we're getting a pretty good deal. It's still hard to approve, so.
John, I wonder, we've talked about this before. I wonder if there's something that might help you to feel more comfortable to be able to compare the replacement cost versus the ongoing maintenance cost for these buildings?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like a sense of what it would cost to replace Harper. You know, I mean, to me, Harper is, is pretty old and needs a lot of work. So in my, from my perspective, $3 million is a lot of work, you know, under anybody's, I think, definition of work. So I, I'd like to big-picture understand that. You know, what, what does the debt load look like? What does the payment look like?
I, I think it, I think we've shared some kind of just general numbers, but we can certainly just based on square footage alone, look at the, the costs associated with that and get some estimates. I think, I think you'd also be surprised at how much cost to replace a school building for the square footage that we have available. But I'm sure that Joe and Colby and the team can probably just run some general estimates of square footage and replacement costs, just so that we can kind of keep that number in mind as we consider the ongoing maintenance costs as well.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it. It'd make it easier to stomach these current expenses, so.
Can I also add in too that, I mean, if you're looking at straight costs, it's one thing, but you also have to kind of take into account the operational needs. And if you shut a, a school down or how you build a new school while the current one is there, you have other logistic items to kind of address at that point too, and how that may affect other areas of your school and your district.
If it's related to this topic, okay.
I was just gonna say, so I share your questions about it, but I also think about the amount of spending and adjustments on these buildings so that have sunk those, and then consider building adds to the cost of whatever it is.
This topic or?
Um, it's, it's a little further back. I mean, so.
Hold that for a second. So the other one related to this is I think we've heard before just a rough estimate of the expected life, life expectancy of the buildings we have. I mean, yes, they're 50 years old, but that doesn't mean a building is gonna die in 10 years. So I don't know what it takes, but I mean, if you're ever gonna contemplate, you know, ballpark, call it $50 million, and then the whole school goes down for a year, disruption related to that. If, if a reasonable life expectancy of these buildings is 20, 30, 40 years, you know, it's reasonable maintenance. That, that's kind of the assumption that we've been making when we've been making these changes is that they do have that kind of life expectancy. I don't know if we have any verification that, you know, the bones of the building are really solid enough that, that it can maintain that. I don't know if that's relatively simple on, you know, pick one or two of the buildings that might be at the most, call it at risk, and just kind of validate that reasonably expected maintenance on a building, this building should last at least another 30 years. In this case, you know, it becomes kind of a loose point of whether we can. So I don't, I don't, I mean, is that something that, Corey, you could look into, whether that makes any sense or not? I think that would also help address some of John's concerns.
I think that's a very rough estimate, I know, but I think, I think that could help to have it in the back of our mind.
There you go.
Yes, um, I, I think John raises the point. I will say that, um, cuz these are the things we need to be thinking about. So I'm fine approving items one, two, and four. I'm curious to know when you need a decision about the, the McKenzie, the Eater options, the gym or the classrooms, but I agree with Lisa that I think the priority should be the classrooms in particular, because of what Amy said last month about if we have one school that has air conditioning, that could be where the summer classes are held, and that that's providing some equity for the entire district.
Good. So really, like as far as the decision point on the rest of them, that would just be administration kind of going through the exercise of making sure we can get the projects that we have to get done over the next two, three, four years. And then coming back with a recommendation on additional that we might be asking the board to approve. That would be done in August, so that'd be kind of the next question.
All right, I had a couple. One was more just kind of a definitional thing that I think is, is good than we probably overlook, and I know it hasn't come up for so many years that many people on, may not have recognized it. But the very first line item, the school-based capital project list, when I first became involved with the board, this was always kind of a background number. And it really, each of the school principals and working with the other administration would pick what their top projects were. You know, there's a, there's a hole in the floor that we walk around. It would be really nice if we filled it in. You know, just basic things that are expensive enough that you have to plan for and prioritize. And it, it seemed like it's been forever, but we went four or five years of building learning commons, and then we've gone two, three years of doing the kindergarten enrichment build-out. And we, we wisely, I think, reduced that number a little bit and said, "Those are projects that are so big that we can't really spend quite as much on some of that background maintenance." You know, a wall that hasn't been painted in 30 years is looking a little shabby type of, type of thing. So it's good to see that, that we're back to the assumption that we have a, a budget per school for those type of projects. And I just wanted to point that out, cuz it's been so long that I'm not sure how many people on the board has even remembered back when we used to do that. So, um, thank you, Corey. So, um, thank you Cory. For, uh, for putting that back in, I just wanted to explain it, did I explain it close enough to the right way?
Yes, uh, uh, often it is painting and some of those additional projects that are necessary for building. It, it isn't too often that those are safety issues. Most of the time our health decisions are addressed in other. It is most of the time. Some of the things that just help the building to look and run more functionally.
So.
Thank you.
Good, so I'm, I'm glad we got that in there. On the, the Mackenzie thing, I think it would have been an interesting discussion if it had been like twice as expensive. I probably still would have come down that it, it was more functional. When it's twenty percent, ten percent more, um, you know, my personal view is that that kind of makes it a no-brainer. The fact that there is a operational value that, that for the summer classes that, that exceed just the normal making progress toward air conditioning because it makes sense. I would actually recommend that we consider pulling it in and getting it done and having that, that functionality available instead of waiting a year. So that would be, I don't know, from a, from a today's standpoint, if that just makes it a look at it a little bit more detail, or if we should, how we want to discuss that, or what's the implications, but that would be something I'd like to throw out there.
I would just ask also the staff at Mackenzie feel okay with us saying you know, that's a big commitment for them.
So I, it, I don't know if there's any other feedback. Cory, what would you need from us as a board, or what would you recommend, if anything?
Just for, so for today, just kind of a board being okay with us starting to incur design costs and items. Sounds like there's at least a few people that were supportive of that. That's really what we're asking today, and then anything additional, we would do spend some more time digging through everything and then have some, some more thoughts and recommendations.
All right, so I think there's been a consensus, anybody have any concerns with one, two, and four? Okay, so you have our, our blessing on that, and I guess I'd like to recommend that we move up the analysis of the, um, Mackenzie, the remaining classrooms, I would say. Whatever the administrative issues may be that Amy pointed out. And, and look at it potentially to, uh, to pull that in by one year. And, and start getting the operational benefits from it, if there are some. That might be, anybody have any concerns with that? So I don't know what you have to do for that Cory, but you have our blessing to make progress.
Thank you.
Does this dramatically shift any of the reserve numbers? I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces here and I, I can see all the risks.
All right, so at least for now, it doesn't, I've tried to not work on this more this summer, but keep like the total dollar amount that we had planned prior to today for the summer of twenty-two similar, and then the amount for summer of twenty-three similar. The one interesting thing is as we talk about the summer twenty-two projects, and as we're about to talk about fiscal year twenty-two's budget, and then we'll approve that in August, is these projects that we do in the summer of twenty-two, we're really only incurring architectural and engineering design costs, and then probably fifteen, maybe twenty percent of the actual hard construction cost by the end of June twenty-twenty-two. So really, we're talking about impacting fiscal year twenty-three the most. And as you look at that five-year plan sheet, one of the reasons that we would be able to do these is up near the top, there's that debt certificate refunding number. And I had talked with Liz Hennessy a couple of months ago, but that's certainly a conversation to follow the district's kind of debt structure process or plan that historically has been around. That's probably a conversation for the fall. Um, and as the district saw last, about a year ago, you know, when you go out to issue debt, like the placeholder there is four and a half million, but because of the market conditions, the district was able to issue debt, not modify the payments, but bring in an extra million dollars. And so as I talked with Liz, yeah, it's possible to go above four and a half million dollars, but you know, we're not going to know that until sometime in the fall of twenty-two or just into the early parts of twenty-three, whenever that might happen. So that is a key piece to all this. But, but yeah, the, the bulk of this, what we're talking about, and we'll talk about again in August, will hit the fiscal year twenty-three budget.
All right, so those are things I'll be talking more about, I'm sure, in the, uh, in the financing. If it turns out that, that we have the ability to, to fund a little bit more, you know, it might make sense to look at the Ramona windows, if that's something that we have to do and it's life safety to, to pull that in before, you know, who knows what will happen to costs? But, you know, if we have the money and it's something we have to do, then.
One anecdotal story about the Ramona windows is we, in some of our buildings, we, as some of the blinds which tend to break, and when they break, they, they break spectacularly, they just, they're a mess. And we've started to go to shades like you see back over here in the corner, they tend to last a little longer, they don't break and bend and just become a mess as easy. Well, there were certain rooms over at Ramona that we needed to address. We wanted to do shades knowing that windows was on the horizon. And when we had the vendor come out and look at it, the old frames and the windows are actually too weak to support shades, so that just kind of lends support to let's address the Ramona windows. Like, you know, it does need to happen, I mean, especially as you think about the, all the classrooms that face the big grass area with the sun coming in on the east, from the east in the morning, so.
I'll just add, that's a critical priority for the Ramona teachers and staff, administrative team. They've talked about that extensively since my arrival. So if there is an opportunity in the board, we're supportive of that move. I know that the team at Ramona would be incredibly grateful, so.
So.
Sad statement, that is.
That was awful.
Yeah, great.
I, I, I think the, the general direction on that is especially if we might have a little bit of extra bond funding, that, that it's a life safety project, it has to get done, you know, costs aren't going to go down. So, you know, if you're looking at one, or you're looking at something that might slip in, that, that sounds like something that, that should be whatever you need to do for the next steps, you should either do or come back and ask for, for permission.
Thank you.
All right, um, any final questions then? And then sometime this summer, we'll have a, a tour, I, I'm hoping. We were, we were talking before about the, both new and old board members wanting to have like a tour of the buildings, and it probably made sense to do when school wasn't in session, so if you could start figuring out what that might mean. I'm, I'm entrusted and I'm sure most of the other board members would be too.
Yes, we talked about August, hopefully.
Okay, all right, great. Uh, thank you, and then I'll pass it back to President Pelling.
Hey, thank you so much. Uh, for purposes of scheduling, we're actually going to switch strategy to finance if that's okay? Yes. Um, so I will turn it over to Strategy Chair, Ms. Schneider-Payne.
Thank you very much, and my apologies to the board, I just have to step out for a bit at night, which is why we're making the switch. So I'm going to start with the liaison report to the strategic planning effort, and I just want to again, um, thank Katie Lee and the whole team for leading a fabulous, um, process which is incredibly time-intensive and inclusive. So we continue to make, or the planning team continues to make terrific progress in the work. We're in the process of setting direction and future goals and priorities. I just want to remind everybody that all the materials are on the website in the strategic planning section, um, and I know that Dr. Kremiscoli has also emailed everybody the recent documents. Once the drafting work is completed in late June, we're going to seek community review and feedback and refining the plans before presenting the final strategic plan to the board, to us, um, in September. We'll likely have a early draft to share with at least two of the overarching ideas with the board in June, um, but we want to make sure that we have lots of, uh, community review and engagement opportunities after the team's final meeting on the twenty-first, um, and before we get to look at it for final review and approval. Therefore, we're going to be considering options and an optimal timeline for review and feedback and take into consideration the summer getaways, um, as well as when families return to August, to school in August. We are going to continue to brief the board and then continue to also share all the materials for you to weigh in. I, I think you can weigh in at any time through, um, President Polling and myself. So I encourage you to do that, we're going to meet today from four to six again. And is there anything I missed?
I think that's a great update, I think it's very thorough, and we'll just keep it open.
Dr. Kremiscoli, is there anything you want to add?
Today's meeting is an important one, and we will have much more information to share with the board and with the community after today's meeting, and then some review that will happen on the twenty-first. So, um, we had a really good meeting last week, and we're looking forward to another good meeting today as well.
And I, and I just have to say, doing it through Zoom is kind of challenging, but, um, the consulting firm has done a really nice job in making sure that you're not just sitting there staring at the screen like you do normally all day, there's lots of breakout groups, lots of participation, and everything is documented via Google Doc, so that, um, it's really, everybody's thoughts and feelings are documented, um, in a very transparent way. So, all right, so I think the next part is the metrics team update.
If we're going to have a conversation, I'd love to just jump in quickly. I want to, um, open the discussion with a reflection back to our last meeting on this topic. You might recall, there was a request from a board member to look at performance data, um, as it relates to the strategic plan without the results from one particular group of students because they typically score so high. And I just want to apologize for not pausing us in the moment to acknowledge that stereotyping any group, in this case, Asian-American students in one particular way is detrimental and unacceptable, even when done under the very best of intentions. I think as a board, we need to be sure that we set the very best example, and I promised myself, and I promised you, that in the future, I'll do better to speak up in the moment, and I hope you all feel comfortable with that.
I had a follow-up to that. Thank you, President Pelling, for bringing that up. Sometimes I have that moment when even as I'm saying something, I know that it's wrong and not what I meant to say. I had that moment, moment at the last meeting, what I said and how I said it was not what I meant, and more importantly, was inappropriate. And I'm sorry for any inconvenience or discomfort that may have caused, and now I'm going to do what I should have done before and stop talking.
I'll just, um, add on, I was personally uncomfortable in that moment, so thank you for bringing it up. And I do think we owe it to each other as board members and team members to call it out in the moment and, and make a, a correction, and I, I feel like I too want to acknowledge, I feel like I had a failure in the moment, and, um, we just need to all be upstanders and continue to make sure that we are a community that is welcoming for all in every way we can. Are there others who wants to say anything, or do we want to move on to metrics? Okay, so, um, Dr. Kremiscoli, I'm going to turn it over to you for the metrics team update.
Thank you, and I would just like to say thank you to the board members for acknowledging that. I, I really do appreciate it, and I know it means a lot, so thank you. In terms of metrics, I can quickly share our metrics. Uh, the metrics team has concluded its work for the year as a, as a team. But we continue to update, uh, not only the team, but the website as well, so anyone interested can continue to follow along. We continue to have really good news in terms of our community spread, where we see all of our metrics, um, falling in the minimal range and have continued to see that progress. So much thanks to our community as a whole, um, to doctors and scientists and to everyone's effort together to make this possible. There does seem to be some movement, in sustainable movement, in a really good direction, so we're really pleased for that. It has been about twenty days since we have reported a positive case among our students or our staff, so that has been really, really good news as well. We are hoping that continues. So for everyone's awareness, uh, we continue to update, um, our positivity graph as well as our new cases per one hundred thousand. You can see this, um, significant amount of time here that has, uh, lapsed since we needed to report a case, so we're really pleased with that. And we haven't had any students or staff member on quarantine due to a District Thirty-nine case in quite some time now, and so we're really pleased with that as well. Again, many thanks to everyone for their, um, continued vigilance in paying attention to their own symptoms, the symptoms of those with whom they might have close contact, and just, just really continuing to be smart about how we're taking care of ourselves and our community. So thank you so much for that. We will continue to update this through the last day of school and are very grateful for everyone's support.
So that's the best report we're going to have, the whole meeting. That is unbelievable. Um, and thank you, everyone, right? I mean, that is major. I also just want to give a shout out to the staff for the vaccination clinics. There are a lot of districts that did not do that for students, and my students were beneficiaries, and it was quick, fast, organized, amazing. And, um, job well done.
Thank you.
Wow, wait, I'm just like.
Thank you. We're not, we're not through it all yet, so continued vigilance is really important, but thank you.
So far, twenty days. It is, that, I almost feel weepy. I turn it back over.
Thank you, thanks so much. And now we will shift back to our schedule to Mr. Caesaretti for SFC.
Thank you, President Pelling, so I, this is more Cory. Uh, we have four things we're going to talk about, uh, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two District Thirty-nine tentative budgets, the, um, the same budget for Wixie, the special ed, transportation, contract extension, and annual resolutions and renewals. With that, I will turn it over to Cory.
All right, thank you. So yeah, there are four items, I, I think each of them will be relative, should be relatively short. Let's start with the District Thirty-nine tentative budget. Okay, so, um, last month, we went through i- in much more detail the district's fiscal year twenty-twenty-two draft budget. One of the requirements is that to ultimately get to that final approved budget is the board does need to approve this month a tentative budget, and, um, since the numbers are, are the, the same as what we had last month, there just wasn't anything at this point that had changed in those couple of weeks or enough time to go through and make any major changes. They are the exact same, so this presentation will be, uh, pretty brief, but we'll kind of summarize everything. This graph shows ninety-two percent of all District Thirty-nine operating revenue is. This graph shows 92% of all District 39 operating revenue is, comes from local sources, a combination of fees and property taxes. Operating expenditures by object. The key takeaway here is salaries and benefits comprise 82, or about 82% of our total expenditures. This particular slide, one of the reasons I like this is it just shows that historically, you know, the operating revenues are exceeding expenditures. The caveat is the COVID year, fiscal year 21. We do see fiscal year 22 returning to revenues being higher than the expenditures. And that is with planning for some additional COVID expenditures for next year as well, which is nice. Our fund balance graph, this is similar, same as last month. Projection of ending fiscal year 21 at about 49% and projecting around 42% for fiscal year 22. And then you see the outlying years in various spots within the 40% range, but still above our 40% annual target. This slide shows kind of the operating funds as a summary. 67.4 million is total revenue, 65.9 on the expenditure side gives us a operating revenue surplus of 1.47, which is one of the reasons we're able to contribute money over to capital projects and fund some of these construction projects that we need to get done. The other uses or transfers out of the operating funds are about 5.9 million, 5.1 for construction, and 800 million for debt certificates. This would leave us at about 27.8 million, or 42% of operating expenditures. I think it's always good to remind everyone that within the tentative budget, we have all of these COVID placeholders. As I previously have mentioned, as we start to identify firm operational plans, we will peel back some of those if we are able to. And if they need to remain in there for another year, we will certainly do so. And one thing I wanted to point out is we're at the tentative stage. You know, what might be some of the changes or things to expect between now and the final budget in August? I just mentioned the impacts of the operational plans. We'll get the 2020 property tax extension, the key point there is the value of the new property growth. That's always a key number to get. Corporate personal property replacement taxes. That number usually is released by the only apartment of revenue in July. Our teachers' union contract is expiring at the end of the current school year. So settling that contract would have an impact. What projects have we identified for summer of 2022? Keep 39 enrollment. We have a good idea of how things are this spring, but where do they ultimately land come August? Transportation, another thing that is impacted greatly by the COVID environment. Right now, we're operating with one student per bench. Are we allowed to increase that? You know, what are we able to do in the transportation area? And then this transfers between funds is another, is another key point to remember. So with that, that's kind of where we're at. It's, like I said, it's just a brief review of the District 39 tentative budget. And then, and then next week, we would be asking the board to vote to approve the tentative budget as is required by state code. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Corey. That was a nice presentation. Questions, anyone? Okay, Frank.
Yeah, there are a couple of questions. One on the top sheet here, the nice summary sheet. I think there's, there's some value added to having, go to the far right column, having an asterisk next to several of these entries and break out the unique COVID changes. As we go back over history, it's really hard to have, you know, a five-year history, and then there's one year that's still out of line. And if we don't document it well, it'll be hard to remember. In particular, when you look at, through the one, the local revenue number, part of that, I think, was because of the change in bus fees and cafeteria fees. So it doesn't represent the, what normally would be the tax levy delta. So, you know, that four and a half percent number looks out of line, but I think can be broken into pieces. And I don't know what the numbers would be, but I think it would add value to have the historical remembrance of those costs or that added, because you don't tend to think of extra revenue coming from this or less. Likewise, the the federal, I don't know how much this has of the of the large federal projects that got approved. I don't know how much that's in here, but whatever is, again, might be worth an asterisk at the bottom. So there's two or three of these entries in the far right that if you have an asterisk and at the bottom you explain the delta, it'll be a lot easier in future readings to see trend lines and not get not think that the trend is going to be four and a half percent revenue increase per year, because we know that's not going to happen. So that was the, that was really the point I wanted to make on that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. Thanks, Corey.
This one will be very brief as well. So the district is part of the Wilmac Community Special Ed Agreement with Avoca, with the Avoca School District. And as part of that agreement, it has, WICSE has its own financial statements. And thus, it's required by state code to follow many of the similar things that the District 39 financial statements and budget are required to do. So next week, we will be asking the board to approve a tentative budget for WICSE as well. I just have a couple of slides. So the agreement is between District 39 and Avoca, has separate financial statements. The reason that it shows up at our meetings is District 39 has served as the fiscal agent for WICSE. Thus, our board needs to approve the tentative budget. And just as a comparison, so the way WICSE operates is there's no fund balance within WICSE. The revenues and the expenditures are set to equal each other each year. And they, and they do at the end of the year as well. Just for reference, the fiscal year 20 budget had, 21 had 195, and then fiscal year 22 would be 201,000. The change is just a couple of percent. And there's really not, as you can see, a lot going through here. You know, so there's, there's just not a lot to, not a lot to talk about. If anyone has any questions about WICSE, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we will have the tentative budget ready for board approval next week. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Were you going to say something?
One quick one. It's not really finance committee, but we hardly ever talk about WICSE. Is it working well? It's an open-ended question. You can kind of extrapolate, but it seems like it is, the partnership. But since we hardly ever talk about it, that sentence or two, like.
Yeah, I mean, I think WICSE serves really as just administrative oversight partnership for us. It serves us well, certainly, and we believe it serves Avoca quite well also. The alternative would be to be a member of one of the other cohorts, such as NSESB, which many of the other districts are part of. There are certainly some benefits to that, and there are some drawbacks as well. And so we continue to find that this does work well for us and don't have an immediate need to make any adjustments. Kristin, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, so I think it's, it really just functions as a partnership. I think that, you know, some of the reasons, some of the reasons for WICSE were to have a state-approved director of special education for Avoca. I think they have that potential now, but I still service, is that person for them through WICSE. We work with, together with Avoca on serving some of their students that they might not have the resources to do, so. It's been a nice partnership, certainly meet with regularly and work together.
I've always heard that, but again, it's like we hardly ever talk about this one, so it seems like worth a minute or two. And the one I always remember is that we retain more control by being in this as opposed to some of the other options that were mentioned. And I think that's always, you know, if we can do it fiscally responsibly, and this is, retaining control is really important. So I think that's another benefit. So, thank you.
Thanks, Frank. All right, shall we do the next thing?
So as you may recall, briefly, previously talked about the special education transportation contract with North Shore. We are ending year three of the contract. State code allows us to extend contract for up to two additional years. Included within your packet is the actual extension document from North Shore. And I have a summary page, I think, that I had previously included that just kind of bullet points a few things that I find worthwhile. I think it's worth noting that the proposed contract would be for 3.3% increase, fee increases in fiscal year 22 and in 23. Certainly, as we evaluate market conditions related to transportation for school districts, it is a tough market, not only when you outsource, but when, or for districts that internally have it. The cost of obtaining drivers is risen much higher than typical inflation. As North Shore has had to do pay increases just to be able to attract drivers. And with COVID, that has made things even tougher, as some, some drivers have just decided to sit out the current year and decided that they don't even, that they're not going to come back. So it is, is it a challenge? I think it's definitely worth noting. Couple of the other key clauses are just that we were able to put in there that there's a pandemic or natural disaster-related closures that protects the districts. It gives us a choice of either paying 80% of the normal routes, and then they can retain their employees and continue to pay them. Or we pay 37%, and then they have the ability to furlough their employees during that period. So that option does offer us some nice flexibility. And then there's additional clause in there about minimum number of days. However, the one nice thing about it, as I read through, is that the minimum number of days has a caveat, except for those pandemic or natural disaster impacts. So we've talked, I mentioned this at a previous meeting. We're kind of at the point where we would be coming back next week, asking for the board to vote to approve the proposed contract. The terms are right in line with what we have previously talked about. And I will be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have ahead of next week's meeting.
Thanks, Corey. I have a question. Does anybody else have a question? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Amy. Oh, no. So, so in, like, let's pretend like next year is a normal year, hopefully. What, what would the cost look like, do we think? Is it 10 or 15% more than in, than in 19?
Oh, so there's the one-page bullet point. The second section has actual expenditures for a few years. So I would think, so like 18 and 19 were 823,000. Fiscal year 19 was 879. If we had a normal operations for the full year, I would expect us to be up, up around there. So we say, when you look at fiscal year 20, the total was just 679. Clearly, the district saved some money by the spring closures, and then this year, we benefited. There have been some closures at different times, and some of the places that we transport our special ed students have been closed a little bit longer than what we certainly have been, and so there's been some savings there. So I think, you know, I think the budget that I have for special ed is 950, 960. We always try to have a little bit of cushion, because if you have somebody move in or that isn't here now, and they have to get transported, we don't have a choice. So I always like to have a little bit. So I'm thinking like 850, 900 is probably a reasonable expectation of where we would shoot back to next year.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, Corey. One more thing, I guess, the annual resolutions and renewals.
Right, so, okay, so annually, there are just a lot of different things that are procedural or part of the budget process or things for the business office. Included in your packet was just, I tried to highlight a few different comments that I had on each item. I'll just start at the top. Every school district is required to have a treasurer's bond on their district-appointed treasurer, which in this case is me. The cost of the bond is $12,800. It covers, I think, the code is that 25% of the district's cash and investment amount. This is a, like I said, this is a requirement that the board needs to approve it annually. Interfund transfers, there will be a resolution. As you recall, so we pay our large capital projects or construction projects out of the Capital Projects Fund. We do this in accordance with ISB accounting regulations. However, the Capital Projects Fund doesn't have its own funding source. So the funds come from the Operations and Maintenance Fund via a transfer. A resolution is needed. And so right now, within the budget is 5.1 million for this particular transfer. This trans, this resolution will be included next week. An interfund loan from the ed fund to the O and M fund. This is something that we have had in the past. It's more precautionary with some years, we need it, some years we don't, but it's nice to have. And one of the reasons is, is that in the O and M fund, the vast majority of the revenue comes from property taxes, which we're either going to collect about, you know, neighborhood of half of it in August. And then we're going to have to wait until late February, March to collect the other half. And since O and M is the primary funding source for capital projects, it is definitely possible, particularly in this upcoming fiscal year, where we may have to transfer more money from O and M capital projects than is available. And so to cover that and to not have the O and M fund go negative, we would then do a loan from ed to O and M. And then as the money comes in, in March, we would then pay that loan back to the ed fund. And the loan would, there would be no loan come June 30th of 2022. This is something that has occurred in the past. This past year, it wasn't necessary, because we had the bond issuance last year, so we had a nice amount of reserves in O and M to cover a situation like this. But it may be needed. We, so we like to have it. The next item is.
Interrupt you on this, because I love fund accounting. Almost as much as you do, probably. So why doesn't the capital fund have its own funding source? Is that, is that something that we could change? Or is that just, is that per the law? It just doesn't?
No, so like, we're not able, one of the things that we're not able to do with our tax levies, we're not able to levy for capital projects in our regular. regular tax levy. And so typically, like historically, like a lot of these projects would have just been paid out of operation and maintenance where the money comes in. And then I forget how many years it's been, five, six, seven. The only state board decided they wanted to make a change and tell everybody to put their capital projects in in Capital Projects Fund. And since there's no funding source, that then meant we had to transfer money. But typically, historically, prior to the last, say, five years, capital projects was kind of reserved for when you would do a big bond issuance and you would either renovate a big part of your school or multiple schools or build a new one, it would be where bond money gets deposited into. So it's really us reacting to what ISB is trying to do.
Oh, thank you.
The next item on the list is payment of accounts payable invoices during the summer. As many of you know, we don't schedule a, any meetings in July and to be good partners with our vendors. And we'd like to still receive goods and services, we asked the board to pass an authorization that allows us to pay invoices before waiting, instead of waiting until the August 23rd board meeting, this allows us to pay things throughout the summer. And then on the flip side, we will, all the things that get paid over the summer, we will present those at the August 23rd board meeting. So that everybody can see it, and then also, as I looked at the resolutions that you'll see next week, District 39, this is a very common resolution across school districts. One of the nice things that I saw in there that District 39 does was it kind of lists out the anticipated vendors that might be impacted by this, just I think it adds a little extra layer of transparency. So that will be included in the resolution next week. And then the last component to this section is an interfund transfer between the Ed Fund and the O and M Fund, so going back to the interfund loan component. Because of the projects that we'll be doing, it seems very likely that we'll need to do a transfer of about 750,000 from Ed to O and M, which then just contributes to the O and M to Capital Projects transfer. The one thing of note to doing a transfer like this, a couple of comments. We have done this in the past, we didn't do it this this current year because it wasn't needed. However, to do it, it does require a public, an additional separate public hearing at the August board meeting. And to have that public hearing, the board just needs to approve the public hearing, much like you will approve a couple of other public hearings next Monday. And then I, and then the district's business office just needs to publish notice seven to 30 days prior to the public hearing for this particular transfer. The only thing that's different, I'll say compared to the notices that we publish for the hearings on the District 39 and the Wixie budget, is those just need to be published at least 30 days ahead of time. There's no, there's no window. So that is all the resolutions and renewals for the upcoming year, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Right, thank you. We're good with the Finance Committee, President Haley, turn back to you.
Right, thank you for all of that information. This moves us to public comments, which will be accepted in person or remotely, real-time via Zoom. I do not see anyone in the room. If there's anyone who wants to speak and it sounds like there is no one who is waiting to speak remotely. Okay, so we will move to old business. Does anyone have any old business? I know for new business, we have at least one topic, which is just to revisit the conversation about the August committee of the whole date. I know when we talked about this the last time, there were some conflicts, so I just wanted to nail that down. So the original date is for August 16?
I will be on a plane returning from a trip and unfortunately, the airline keeps changing when that time is. Whether I want them to or not. So I I either won't be here, I'll have landed after an all-night flight or I'll be in an airplane, but none of those really support my being at a committee of the whole meeting, unfortunately, on that day.
I can be, I can participate remotely, which I think would be fine if I will know Mr. Penzicke that is not here. That still allow us to keep that date?
We can keep that date, we simply need quorum. Or we can move it to Tuesday or Wednesday if that is preferred by the board, so more individuals can participate. I would look to Cory just to see if there's any timeline critical elements that would be impacted if we were to push Committee of the Whole to the 17th or the 18th of that week.
That would be fine.
So it really is at the pleasure of the board, we can schedule it on a different day of the week if we want to have more board members present, or we can leave it on Monday and
I may be here remote either way on the 17th, so.
I mean, I'd appreciate it, but if it's hard, you know, I can, I can live without it, but I would like to be involved, so if we could move it to 17th or 18th, whatever worked out better for people.
How complicated? I don't know yet, potentially, but also how taxing is that to shift the day for you?
I I think as long as it's not too taxing for Cory, I think the rest of us should be okay, Heather, is there something that you're thinking of?
If it's, if it's Monday, would it be here, like, would it change?
It's, new teacher orientation starts on Tuesday, so Monday would make no impact and Tuesday we can find an alternative.
It doesn't make a huge difference one way or the other, but.
Finding an alternate location is not, it's not a challenge, so please do not worry about that.
Okay. Okay, so all things being equal, maybe we do Tuesday?
Tuesday is the first day the new teachers come, Katie?
Yes.
So it would, if we're going to move it, I would prefer to move it to Wednesday, so we can all be present to greet the new teachers. And then Wednesday, we may have a partial team, but I think that would, that would be okay from our end, so. If we move it, I would prefer to move it to Wednesday.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Looks like, Miss Stone, is that okay for you?
Oh yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we will just confirm everything and then we'll confirm on next Mondays at the board meeting, so everyone knows for sure, so for now, don't completely release that Monday date. We're just gonna just double-check that everything works out before we post that as the official date on the Wednesday, 18th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
I had more just a question, I think John's on top of this, but there's a potential law change, is that, is it too early to talk about that or?
Are you talking about the property tax?
Yeah. I mean, not today, but I mean, is it too early to, when when is the right time to talk about that?
You know, I would defer to to superintendent on the right time to talk about that.
Yeah, at this point, we understand the bill is waiting for Pritzker's signature and we're not quite sure how it will play out even once signed. So we're at a bit of a juncture right now because we know we have next Monday's meeting and then we'll be on break for a little bit, so. Cory, do you, we certainly could talk about it next week briefly at Monday's meeting and just give the board an update on anything that has unfolded by then. I expect that we won't really know much more until July or August, Cory, would you say the same?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess, from my perspective, it's on my radar. And obviously, it's, depending on which district you are, it can be a pretty big deal. But I was hesitant to want to talk about it too much or to have a lot of discussion until Pritzker signs it because it could become a moot point, but it is definitely noteworthy and on my radar.
It doesn't sound like, I mean, if we were gonna do anything related to it, that it's not like we have to do it in August or something, so. It's just I wanted to just kind of bring it up that I, I think it's an important topic to talk about if it passes. Because there's lots of interesting discussions we could have, but when it's you know, in transit, there's no point.
Thank you, we agree, so we will, if anything happens between now and next week, we will give the board an update. Otherwise, we we can plan to talk about it again in August. Great, thank you.
All right, then I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education students collective negotiating and specific personnel.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education students collective negotiating and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John C is ready.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Frank Penzicca.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes. Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Haley.
Yes. Motion carried, we are now adjourned to executive session and the time is 9:24. Should we take a brief break?
Sure, thank you.
I have started the audio recording, we are just waiting for Heather to return. So you will restart the open session?
We are, we are now in regular session. And I seek a motion to approve the recommended two-day unpaid suspension of employee 6103.
I move to approve recommended two-day unpaid suspension of employee 6103.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John C is ready.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Frank Penzicca.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Haley.
Yes. Having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
I move to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those, will the clerk please call the roll?
John C is ready.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Frank Penzicca.
Yeah.
Lisa Schneider-Babes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Haley.
Yes. Motion carries and the time is 10:32. We're now adjourned.